Okay, because I wanted to introduce you.
Paul, take your seat.
Let's get together.
It's 5:05 PM and I'd like to call this special board meeting to order. Mrs. Fisher is not here and may not be able to get back this evening, so she asked me to step in for her. Purpose of today's meeting is to hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of the 2013-14 tentative millage rates and the 2013-14 tentative budget. At this time, I request all cell phones be turned off or put in silent mode. I'd also like to take this opportunity to remind members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Today's agenda includes presentations on the percentage of increase or decrease over rollback rate, proposed millage, budget overview, and proposed tentative budget, a public hearing on the tentative budget, and the adoption of required local effort millage, basic discretionary millage, capital outlay millage, a resolution determining revenues and millages, and a resolution adopting the tentative millage rates for fiscal year 2013-14. Fiscal year 14 tentative budget and related resolution adopting the tentative budget, acceptance of the 2013 certificate of taxable value, scheduling of the final budget public hearing, and comments from board members, board attorney, and superintendent. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Armstrong, seconded by Mrs. Dozier. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the like sign. The motion passes four to zero. I'll now turn the meeting over to Dr. Nancy Graham, Superintendent, and Dr. Amy Desamore, Assistant Superintendent, Business and Finance. Dr. Graham?
It's my pleasure to have Dr. Desamore go through with you the proposed budget for the coming fiscal year. I can tell you, there's been much thought and energy and work put into this and input from multiple directors and executive directors in putting this budget together. So, we're pleased to present it to you today and to get your feedback.
Thank you very much. Dr. Graham, members of the board, this hearing is the first of two public hearings required under Florida statutes to give the public an opportunity to provide input into the proposed millage levy and the budget for this fiscal year. The superintendent submitted her proposed tentative budget to the board on July 24, 2013, when you received an emailed package of material which included information on the tentative budget. This hearing was advertised in the news press on July 26. The second and final budget public hearing, by your approval, will be held on Tuesday, September 10, 2013, at 5:05 PM here at the Lee County Public Education Center. The notice of that meeting to the public will be through a direct mailing from the property appraiser's office. The mail document is known as the TRIM, or Truth in Millage Notice, and is sent as required by law. This year, as we began the 2014 budget process, we focused on several goals as we formulated what the budget would be for 2014. First, we wanted to avoid programmatic cuts to maintain the integrity of the programs that we have within all of our schools. Per your directive, we wanted to structure a budget with no use of reserves, as we had used reserves in 2012 and 13, and you, as a board, had made it clear to us that you were not interested in utilizing reserves for the 2014 budget. So, that was one of our paramount goals as we entered into the process. And also, per your directive, and per the state's directive, we wanted to maintain reasonable fund balance levels for future use. So, those were the items that we really looked at as we entered into the budget formulating process for the 2014 year. As outlined in the TRIM requirements or the Truth in Millage requirements, we must first discuss the millage rollback rate. The rollback rate is the millage or the tax rate which, when applied to the current year's tax roll, would produce the same amount of dollars as produced in the previous year. The calculated rollback rate for this fiscal year is 7.313 mills. We are actually levying 7.598 mills. So, what we're levying is an increase of the rollback rate by 3.9 percent. The proposed millage rate for 2013-14 school year, as I said, is 7.598 percent, an increase of .014 mills from what it had been the previous year. There are several pieces of the millage rate that I'd like to point out now. The required local effort piece is the millage rate or the tax rate which is set by the legislature. That required local effort is required to be levied by all school districts in order to participate in any other funding that the state would give us through the Florida Education Finance Program. And, that millage is actually over 70 percent of the total millage that we are asking you to levy today. So, most of the millage in which we're looking at, you really don't have discretion over as the legislature has set that rate for required local effort. Now, the new millage rate that we're looking at right now will generate $20.8 million more than the previous fiscal year because of the increase in the tax rate and also because of the increase in the tax roll. As we look at what the tax rate has done over the past several years, this is an illustration of our tax rate from 2004, 2005, through what we're asking for 2014 today, which is 7.598. This millage is slightly higher, .014, than what it was in the previous year, but as you can see, it is still lower than what it had been in 2010, '11. Also, as you look at our tax roll history, the tax roll, which is a little over $59 billion this year, this is the first time the tax roll has increased since 2008. The tax roll has been on a steady decline since 2008, and this will be its first increase since then. So, we feel that this is a very positive indicator of our financial condition here in the county and also throughout the state and country, and we feel very positive about what that means for the fiscal future. The tax roll did increase a little over 4 percent for this fiscal year. So, in layman's terms, let's look at what these new millage rates, what the effects will be on the average property taxpayer that we have within our county. As I stated before, the tax roll is increasing this year by an average of 4 percent. So, of course, that will mean different things for property tax owners, or for property owners. However, on average, the tax roll is increasing by 4 percent. So, what we're showing here is what will happen to different property values, assuming that they increase 4 percent over the previous year. So, when you look at a home that was valued at $100,000 last year, the new value this year, if it increases by 4 percent, would be $104,000. Based on last year's tax rate, that person would have paid school district taxes of This year, based on the new value and the new tax rate, that tax would be $624, an increase of about $31.20 for that taxpayer. We've also shown several different scenarios with $150,000 and $200,000 property values at a 4 percent increase, with the highest increase at $200,000 being $63.23. We've also done a comparison here of a 3 percent tax increase, or 3 percent property value increase, which would be what people under the Save Our Homes adjustment would see. So, when you're looking at a person with a property value of $100,000 last year, if their property value increased 3 percent in this year, they would have a value of $103,000. That person would be looking at an increase in school district taxes this year of about So, what we wanted to do was just make sure to show what the effects would be of these new tax rates that we are proposing today, what the effect would be on the average homeowner in Lee County. The total proposed millage levy and the amounts to be raised by them are as follows. Required local effort, set and adjusted by the legislature, is at 5.350 mills, for an amount to be raised from that based on our tax certified tax roll of $305,225,835. Basic discretionary, the maximum is also set by the legislature at .748, with the proposed amount to be raised of $42,674,566. And the capital outlay millage, the maximum of 1.5 mills, with a total proposed amount to be raised of $85,577,337. For a total millage of 7.598, of $433,477,738. Now, as outlined in the superintendent's proposed tentative budget on July 24, the total proposed budget, tentative budget for 2013-14 for all funds is $1,292,95,554. You see the breakdown of each individual fund as follows, and we will go into a little bit more detail in each specific fund, so we can talk about some things within there before we proceed to the superintendent's recommendations. Just as a reminder, each budget, each fund in the budget is earmarked for specific purposes, and we have six funds that we're going to deal with and talk about today. The general fund is basically the catch-all fund for the district, and it is the major source of revenue within the school district budget, and its general purpose is for the education of students and all the operating expenses of the district. It is the major fund of the district. The debt service fund is specifically and solely for the payment of debt, and all revenue in the debt service fund comes from a transfer from the capital funds in order to pay our debt service for each individual year. The capital fund is for the capital expenditures of the district, primarily used to build schools, buy equipment, and provide maintenance and technology services across the district. Our food service fund supports the breakfast and lunch program for all students. It is a self-sustaining fund, and it receives no other revenue from any other funds in the budget. Our special revenue funds are all federal funds that we receive that must be used for specific purposes, as outlined in each of the grants that we either apply for or receive. And our internal service funds accounts for the insurance costs of the district, both health insurance and property and casualty. So, we'll go through and talk about each of the funds in general. The general fund, as I said, is our major source of revenue for the district's daily operations. In our current tentative budget, it's now at $782.4 million, and it does represent 60 percent of our total budget. That fund is set to support approximately 86,550 students for the 2014 year. That is our FTE projection, and that's an increase of over 2 percent from the previous year. So, we continue to grow really in leaps and bounds throughout every year. Just a few facts about the revenue within our general fund. The revenue generated by the FEFP, or Florida Education Finance Program, is our major source of revenue within the general fund. This year, we're going to be receiving, at estimate, about $608.1 million in total FEFP revenue. That's a $46.7 million increase from the previous year. So, excuse me, for us, it really was a positive year within the legislative cycle for education. What that represents is about a 6 percent increase in per pupil funding, and it represents about $6,510 per weighted FTE. Now, I do want to point out that even though it was a very positive legislative cycle for education, keep in mind that these numbers, in terms of the amount that we're receiving per weighted FTE and per FTE, is still an amount less than what we were receiving in 2007. So, even though we did make up much ground through what we got through the legislative process this year, there still really is much more for us to do in order to get back to the levels that we were pre-recession. So, we'll still continue to push hard for that and lobby for education so that we get back to the levels that we feel that we need to really drive the system. The base student allocation, $3,752.30 this year, it's an increase of $169 from last year, so again, a positive indicator. As I mentioned earlier, there was a 4 percent increase in the tax roll from last year. And, so this year, 43 percent of our FEFP dollars are state-funded. That is a much larger percentage than what it has been in previous years when our tax roll was much higher. A lot more, much, a larger percentage of our dollars in the FEFP were being driven at the local level as opposed to the state level. But even though our tax roll increased by 4 percent, it is still much lower than what it has been in previous years. So, 43 percent of our FEFP dollars are state-funded. I'm sorry, excuse me. So, as we look at our source of operating revenues and where those revenues come from, 56 percent of what we have in the general fund is generated through local tax dollars. Now, this is our total general fund operating revenues, which includes FEFP and other sources as well. 43 percent are state-funded, with a very, very small percentage, less than 1 percent, being from federal funds in the general fund. As we look at where those dollars are budgeted right now, you see that 67 percent of our dollars in the general fund are budgeted for instruction and direct school expenses. That is what it is right now at the tentative budget. You'll see that percentage go up at the final budget time because we still have a lot of finalizing to do within our budget process. You will see that we still have the carryover still left to do. Schools are still budgeting, so by the final budget, that percentage will be much larger than what you see it is right now.
Oh, thank you so much.
Food service revenue is currently budgeted at $59.8 million, and the current budget includes breakfast for every child at no cost to parents. Lunch prices will remain the same for 2014, which I believe will be good news for our parents who pay for lunch. That is a good way to keep prices level in terms of helping out the economic situation for all of our families, and healthy choices continue to be the focus for our food service The special revenue fund consists of Title I, IDEA, and other major federal grants, and the current budget that we have in special revenue is $54.8 million. That budget will grow, so you will see a higher number within our federal, within our federal funds for the final budget, but we continue to put monies into those budgets as we are awarded grants. So, at the final budget time, you will see that number to be higher than what it is right now. And one of the major stories inside of our special revenue fund is the impact of sequestration. What we're feeling right now is, in the IDEA funds, we reduced that money by about $4 million from last year to help mitigate the impacts of sequestration. And in Title I, those, the two major grants that we have in our special revenue funds, that was reduced by a little over $1 million, almost $2 million. So, and we continue to feel the impacts in different ways. We see, as different things transpire throughout the year, things that we didn't expect, sequestration to affect, it is affecting. For example, ROTC instructors. We found that one ROT instructor retired this past year. The Army did not fill that position because of the impacts of sequestration. So, things that we never would have figured would have even entered into the sequestration issue enter in. So, some of the things won't become apparent until we see them throughout the year. We'll continue to keep you abreast of those, but we feel that, as best we could, we plan for that impact of sequestration. And we probably really honestly will not know for months exactly what the impact will be. We've estimated what we think it will be, and we've cut the budget in order to handle that, but we've not yet received any final word from the federal government as to what it will be as of yet. So, we will keep you posted as we get additional information. Our capital budget is currently budgeted at almost $221,229. Local property taxes are the sole substantial source of revenue really we have left in the capital budget. There are several things that happened this year that, of course, you all are very familiar with because we've had many different conversations on. Impact fees were reduced by 80 percent and will stay that way for the next two years. All major sources of state revenue and capital, our PICO funds, were, were cut for this year and ongoing. So, we have no state revenues budgeted within our capital funds within the next five years because we don't anticipate receiving that back. And of course, the impacts on what has happened with our tax roll had a major impact on the amount of revenue that we're receiving even from our local property taxes within the capital budget over the five years. Again, it is a positive indicator that our tax roll has increased by 4 percent, but it is still much lower than what it was in 2007. So, we have a long road to go in terms of building that capacity of revenue back up within the capital funds. Our five-year plan, which you are receipt of, is in, it is in the tentative budget book that you now have, and also within the superintendent's proposed tentative budget information that she submitted on Wednesday, has no new schools built in within the five years. So, seats will be an issue. We'll be having many discussions as the year goes on as to exactly how we will be handling the need for additional seats that will be driven by that 2 percent per year FTE growth that we're seeing each year. Another major source within our capital plan will be maintenance and renovations and technology. Our maintenance and construction department should be very proud of the fact that, as we look around the state, we really feel like we have some of the best maintained facilities in the, in the entire state, and we want to make sure that we're maintaining that standard and that focus. But it's very difficult, too, with the amount of revenue that we're looking at and the competing interests that we have inside of capital with maintenance and technology, with the need for the building of new schools. So, because of that, another source of revenue is really needed in order for the plan to remain viable. And we, as a district, and you all as a board, will definitely have to have some serious conversations in the upcoming months that I'm sure the superintendent will be leading. Inside of our debt service, our debt service payments are at $42.9 million for the upcoming year. Again, as I said, all of our revenue in the debt service funds are coming from a straight transfer from our capital funds. Now, the statutory debt service capacity is, by law, we are not allowed to have more debt service than what 75 percent of our local property tax revenues can sustain. So, our debt service payments can't be more than 75 percent of the revenue we're generating through our capital tax millage. According to the statutory debt service limits, we are at 67 percent of that capacity. It's a good number, 67 percent. That is pretty solid in terms of where we want to be with our debt service payment. However, as a board, you all have always said that you had a recommended debt service capacity in that you did not want us to exceed 50 percent of those revenues. When we look at your recommended debt service capacity, we're now at 100 percent of that capacity. So, those are pieces of information that we want to make sure you know as we enter into the discussion in the future about how we might add needed seeds, or the need to possibly bond or borrow additional money in order to fund some of the initiatives we have going forward in the future. We'd like to have, also have a conversation about our reserves, as again, that was one of the major focus of the budget as we looked at how we were going to build our budget for the 2014 year. So, reserves are used to help protect us from further budget cuts in future years, and reserves are also used to absorb progressions that we may feel throughout the year, and indeed, there probably will be some. Reserves, as you all know, were utilized in FY12 and FY13 in order to balance the budget. But we did meet the goal that you set in FY14, in that the budget was balanced without the use of any reserves. So, in FY14, we did balance the budget without the use of reserves. The reserves currently stand at $26 million, and for contingency is at $20 million. So, reserves and contingency at this point represent 7 percent of current revenue. So, in conclusion, our Lee County Schools budget for the 2014 year supports a sum total of 116 schools, an estimated 86,500 students, and based on how we built it, we are supporting the initiatives of the state in the strategic plan. We believe that we've built the budget to help serve the mission of the school district, which is to ensure that each student receives his, reaches his or her highest personal potential. And we respectfully submit this budget in support of our mission and the students and employees of the Lee County School District, as well as the citizens of Lee County. So, tonight's action, based on that budget that we will ask you to take tonight, is to adopt all proposed millages for the 2013-14 tentative budget, to adopt the tentative budget for the 2013-14 fiscal year, and to adopt all resolutions related to the millages and the budget.
Thank you, Dr. Desamore.
The next item on the agenda is public hearing. Now recess the special school board meeting and open the public hearing to consider the adoption of the tentative proposed millage rates and the tentative budget for 2013-14. Dr. Graham, if you'd please continue by stating your specific recommendations.
Recommendation one, recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2013-14 tentative proposed required local effort millage of 5.350 mills with a proposed amount to be raised of $305,225,835. The RLE includes basic RLE of 5.327 and a prior period adjustment millage of .023. Recommendation two, recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2013-14 tentative proposed basic discretionary millage of .748 mills with a proposed amount to be raised of $42,674,566. Recommendation three, that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2013-14 tentative proposed capital outlay millage of 1.50, with a proposed amount to be raised of $85,577,337. The total millage will equal 7.598 mills with a total amount to be raised of $433,477,738. The total millage rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate by 3.90 percent. Recommendation four, that the Lee County School Board adopt the resolution determining revenues and millages levied, and the resolution adopting the tentative millage rates for the fiscal year 2013-2014. Recommendation five, recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the tentative budget and related resolution adopting the tentative budget for the 2013-14 school year as follows. General operating in the amount of $782,401,396. Special revenue budget in the amount of $114,648,823. Debt service budget in the amount of $47,83,312. Capital outlay budget in the amount of $220,862,024. Internal service budget in the amount of $127,99,999. Total tentative budget, $1,292,95,554. Recommendation six, recommend that the Lee County School Board accept the 2013 certification of taxable value for Lee County, Form DR420S, and authorize the superintendent to complete and execute the form. Recommendation seven, that the Lee County School Board schedule a public hearing on the final 2013-2014 millage levies and final budget for the 2013-14 school year for Tuesday, September 10, 2013, at a specially scheduled board meeting to begin at 5:05 PM in the Lee County Public Education Center boardroom.
Thank you. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on these matters. The time allowed for comments is three minutes per speaker. Is there anyone on the right section that would like to speak? In the left side? Seeing no one, I will now close the public hearing and reconvene the special board meeting of July 30, 2013. The board will now consider each of the superintendent's recommendations. Dr. Graham, please restate your recommendations individually, allowing the board the opportunity to vote before moving to the next.
Recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2013-2014 tentative proposed required local effort millage of 5.350 mills with a proposed amount to be raised of $305,225,835. The required local effort includes basic required local effort of 5.327 and a prior period adjustment millage of .023.
Board members, you've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Dozier, seconded by Mr. Armstrong. Discussion, Mrs. Dozier.
I would just remind members of the public that this is the required local effort, and this is actually set by the state. It is not set by the school board. And while I applaud all of the efforts of our legislators during this past session to try to bring us back, they were dealt with a hand of a wavering economy, and I applaud them for trying to get us back to the, the levels of funding that we were back in 2007. Hopefully, we were looking at a good year coming up with the legislature, and maybe next year, we will come back to what the funding was in 2007. So, I thank you for this.
Other comments?
I guess I would just like sort of a general description by the superintendent of where reductions have been taken, what the impact has been in the schools and, and on the various departments, central office. Can you give me just sort of a... Can you give me just sort of a...
I can do that, if that's okay. We have, several things did happen. We did look at all of our department personnel. We took a zero-based budgeting process approach this year, and what we did was totally looked at every single department person. We had, every department had to input, had to give us the information about every single person that was in their department, what their responsibilities were, what they did, and was it mandatory, was it related to federal, state, board policy, so on and so forth. We looked at all that information, and after we did that, what we came down to was a reduction of several different department positions in order to try to come in line with the budget, because even though we did receive a budgetary increase from the legislature this year, we had directive not to use reserves and try to build back up what we had used previously. So we ended up cutting, I believe, around 20 positions out of departments by the time we were finished with the process. We did also cut several different projects and other discretionary budgets out of department budgets as well, to come down to all of our department reductions. At schools, we reduced the school allocation. So there was, and basically what that looked like was possibly a decrease in school personnel. It really depended, because many times, if a school was going to see an increase in their student population, and we pared down the school allocation that they were getting, it didn't look like them losing people, it just looked like them not being able to gain people. So the school-by-school effect was very different depending on what was going on within the FTE of the school, what was going on within personnel that might be retiring or leaving. So much of the reductions at the school level were handled through attrition, even though they, you know, it did look like they had less personnel on hand this year than they did the year before, but many times, it wasn't necessary to really deal with it through actually letting people go. We have, to my knowledge, handled everybody that was on the surplus list, that were surplus from different schools, without the need of a reduction in force. So we were able to take all of our personnel that were here and place them somewhere based on where the need was within individual schools, maybe not at the same school, but, you know, at a different school. So we handled that without the need of a reduction in force. So all in all, the budgetary impact was that we reduced about $15 million out of the budget after we took into account those department reductions, the school reductions, and then also some other things that would have bargaining impact that we discussed earlier. Answered the question.
Thank you. And this is going to be a picky question. Instructional staff training. I see that...
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Page 37.
So that is a significant decrease, and I know that some of these positions and programs, you've moved from one budget to another, and for the most part, I've been able to figure out why numbers were up and down, but...
Are you asking why the reduction?
Yeah. What is accounted for?
Well, I can tell you this, and Amy wants to address it, she can as well. I think you're going to see these numbers fluctuate a little between now and when you see this, the final, this is a tentative proposal, and so we are still going line by line and determining where the dollars need to be. The totals aren't going to change as far as the bottom line, but we are still moving money. And there has been a very, I'll use the word "large" for lack of a better word, but curriculum services and professional development have probably been the two biggest areas that we're spending a lot of time reorganizing and restructuring, and so I think you're going to see those dollars move around a bit. But I will, if the concern is that professional development is getting less attention, there couldn't be anything less true at this point. So I think you'll see a change in that when you see the final budget proposal. Set?
Yeah, that answers the question.
That is fair and accurate.
And I just have a general observation for the board. I think, you know, we've talked about the role of the advisory committees, and I think this year, we need to be serious about the role of the finance advisory committee. We need to charge them with this problem that we have of capital funding, the impact of the impact fees. I see that we've put impact fees back in the budget after two years. The long game, as far as the builders are concerned, is that that money's not coming back. And so I think we need to see a worst-case exploration of that, and we've talked about other ways to raise revenue. And I think not only do we as a board have to talk about it, but I think we have to start bringing in community experts to not only help us consider our situation, but also who will turn around when we do make a decision and help us speak to the public about some of the steps that we're going to have to take with respect to our financial situation. So I just want to put that thought about finance advisory out there. And that's it for my comments.
Any other comments? Okay, then one will ask for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passes four to nothing. Recommendation number two, please.
Recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2013-14 tentative proposed basic discretionary millage of .748 mils with a proposed amount to be raised of $42,674,566.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support. Motion by Mrs. Dozier, second by Mr. Armstrong. Discussion? Mrs. Dozier.
Again, this is set by the legislature, and I think that, I think that some accolades need to go out here. While we really only had the capital outlay of $85 million, and when you look at the overall total, and then you look at the total budget compared to what it was two years ago, I think that Dr. Graham and her staff have done a significant job in presenting us with a tentative balanced budget, because six months ago, I was hearing, oh, we're going to have to take 25, we're taking 25 million out of reserves again, that's what we're looking at. And I know that this board had a very strong message to send, and that message was given to a brand-new superintendent that, according to my calculations, has not even had 30 days on the job yet. And I think that accolades definitely need to be presented or afforded at this time because you and your staff that you have selected, I think, has put together a budget that this board can support. It's not, you know, the allocation, the student, the base student allocation that we would all like, we would like to see more, and we would like to see our state more competitive with the other states out there. This is an argument that we've had for 13 years. If you look at the budget and divide the whole budget by a number, then you get this number, and how can you say that you only get $3,000 for students, because if you pull in capital, you really get this many? That's not the game that we like to play. But I'm just basically saying that I applaud you all for coming in with a very difficult task, and I know it was a difficult task, to juggle everything that you are continuing to juggle, and I just thank you and your staff for everything that you've done to be able to present this to us tonight.
Thank you. I will tell you, the queen behind it is right over there. And it is, and it is a work in progress, I will tell you that. And we've also talked already about some process things we're going to put in place on the front end of forming next year's budget, so that we've got better data than, we've had to collect some data after the fact, and that's why I'm telling you, the numbers are probably going to change between now and the final budget. Not the bottom line, but where the money actually goes. But thank you for those comments.
Other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a like sign. Motion passes four to zero. Recommendation three, please.
Recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2013-14 tentative proposed capital outlay millage of 1.50 with a proposed amount to be raised of $85,577,337. The total millage will equal 7.598 mils with a total amount to be raised of $433,477,738. The total millage rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate by 3.90%.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Support.
Dozier, seconded by Ms. Morgan. Any discussion?
And I'm going to say one other thing, if I may. I'm trying to get to my notes that I put on here. While this is, if you look at the millage comparison, while this is not as high as it's always been, it is a little bit higher when you look at the amount that individual homeowners have to pay over on page five. I hope that instead of hearing an outcry of the community that my taxes have gone up, I hope that the community will say, this is an investment in our community, and this is an investment in the future, because this is truly what this is. And, you know, while the taxes, that little bit, may seem like a lot, I know that the tax rolls have increased, and I know that we are coming back slowly but surely. And I just hope that everyone will look at this for what it really is, and it is an investment in our community, it's an investment to make Lee County better, it's an investment in our future. Thank you.
And further to that, it's a growing student population, which, as it becomes a chain reaction, it's teachers, it's equipment, it's facilities, and so Mrs. Morgan spoke eloquently about the capital side of it, and we're going to have to deal with that at some point down the line. But the increases are there, but they're relatively small when you consider how fast this community is growing and the needs that we have to provide in terms of education for our kids. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a like sign. The motion passes four to zero. Recommendation number four.
Recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the resolution determining revenues and millages levied and the resolution adopting the tentative millage rates for the fiscal year 2013-2014.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Support.
Moved by Ms. Dozier, seconded by Mrs. Morgan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a like sign. The motion passes four to zero. Recommendation five.
Recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the tentative budget and related resolution adopting the tentative budget for the 2013-14 school year as follows. General operating in the amount of $782,401,396. Special revenue budget in the amount of $114,648,823. Debt service budget in the amount of $47,83,312. Capital outlay budget in the amount of $220,862,024. Internal service budget in the amount of $127,99,999. Total tentative budget, $1,292,95,554.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Dozier, seconded by Mr. Armstrong. Discussion? Mrs. Dozier.
I said I was finished, but I just can't help but say that when you look at the total tentative budget at 1.2, this truly is showing that educators do know how to do more with less. And this is not only doing more with less as far as the money that we're putting out, but we also have more students, as all of us have said here and said. So again, I think accolades go out for all of our staff members that are making our schools the best that they are and making our kids reach their highest potential. And so I just, you know, that kind of goes with the opening, the preface of, we're starting back another school year, and I know that our teachers are going to bring it to the door, our principals are going to bring it to the door, our administrators here are going to bring it to the door, and it doesn't matter how we slash the budget, how we cut what they have, they always make that budget work, and they're to be applauded for that as well. Bus drivers, lunchroom managers, everyone. Thank you.
This is my third time through this, and every year, the number has been lower, and every year, the student population has been higher. So it's remarkable. And I do, I do appreciate the fact that we got to the zero-based budgeting formula, and that's, you'll never convince me that's not the way to do it. It has to be done that way, and I think you can find some savings in the appropriate distribution of resources when you do that. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a like sign. Motion passes four to zero. Recommendation six.
Recommend that the Lee County School Board accept the 2013 certification of taxable value for Lee County Form DR420S and authorize the superintendent to complete and execute the form.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Armstrong, seconded by Mrs. Dozier. The discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a like sign. Motion passes four to nothing. Recommendation seven.
Recommend that the Lee County School Board schedule a public hearing on the final 2013-2014 millage levies and final budget for the 2013-2014 school year for Tuesday, September 10, 2013, at a specially scheduled board meeting to begin at 5:05 PM in the Lee County Public Education Center boardroom.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support. Motion by Ms. Dozier, seconded by Mr. Armstrong. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a like sign. Motion passes four to zero. Next move to board member comments. We'll start with Mr. Armstrong.
I have none at this time.
Mrs. Morgan.
Well, I just want to piggyback what some other people have said about the finance staff. This has been an incredible sort of roller coaster year for this staff, and beginning with having to outline the responsibilities and every single individual in the district office, and every individual in the schools, and their responsibilities, align them with the laws and the policies and the regulations, and then, you know, sort of assorted discussions about what we were going to do and not do, and what we wanted and didn't want, and then in a matter of 30 days, you all pulled it all together, you've come up with a budget that I know you feel confident in, and the superintendent does, and, you know, all I can do is say what everybody else has said, and you guys are to be commended for the work you have done this year. It has been extraordinary, and I'm very appreciative of what you and the members of your staffs have done.
Mrs. Dozier.
Didhoh.
Likewise, how's that? We'll get through it real fast. Mr. Martin, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
Dr. Graham.
I want to say one quick thing, because the reserve issue has come up over and over again. The last two years, $46 million was taken out of reserves, and with this budget, we've put back in 23 million, so we're halfway to what was taken out in the last two years. There is a perception, because we have 23 million in reserves, talking the general fund, 23 million in reserves, and then 20 million in contingency, that's 7% of our budget that we have a lot of money to spare. And I asked Dr. Desmore to remove the phrase "shortfall budget fund" from the terminology in the presentation. I got the sense that there was a perception that we had this money just sitting there, so if we didn't balance the budget, we could just pull it from that fund. So I wanted to get rid of that terminology altogether. Reserves are designed for the unexpected, and the unexpected is that it hasn't been budgeted, but it's something that has to be taken care of. So we are not at a large, a large number for an organization this big. We really need to have a larger reserve than we have, and we will continue to work to that end. The state, that 20 million contingency is because the state says if you get below 3%, then they want to come in and help you do your budgeting, because they think you're in crisis. And so we are just 4% above that minimum that the state will allow. So I just wanted to throw out there that 43 million in the world of a district this large is not a lot of money, and 20 million of it really can't ever go away, or the state will want to take care of us. So I just wanted, since the reserves come up all the time, I want, I want people to really understand what the reserves are for, and there is no shortfall budget fund, per se. So that's why, in case you miss that terminology, that's why it's gone. But I too want to thank Dr. Desmore and her staff, and have thanked her profusely for allowing a new superintendent ask a lot of questions, and she knows they're not finished, which is why we say you'll see some shift in the numbers before you get the final budget. So thank you for your support.
Questions don't hurt.
I'm learning a lot.
They help tremendously. And I want to thank you too, Amy, because you've done a good job shepherding this thing along, along with your staff, and I just appreciate hearing that term being used, because to me, it's so critical.
Thank you.
At this point, there are no, having no other business come before the body, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Mr. Armstrong, motion. Is there a second?
Support.
Mrs. Morgan, seconds. All in favor? Aye. We will reconvene in about ten minutes for the action meeting.